Good evening. I would like to call to order the Gladstone Planning Commission and City Council joint work session for Tuesday, March fifteenth at five thirty P M. Tammy, will you please do a roll call of the Planning Commission?
Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Milch.
Here.
Commissioner Labonte.
Present.
Commissioner Poole. Commissioner Mercero.
Here.
Commissioner Volbada.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Present. And Mayor Stempel, would you like to do your roll call for City Council, please?
Thank you. Tonight, we're guests, the City Council's guests of the Planning Commission, and we're being run by the very capable Chair Smith. So in that vein, could you please do the roll call vote for the City Council, please, Tammy?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stempel.
Here. So Chair Smith, want to take it away?
Yes. Could we all please stand for a flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, tonight's meeting is to start reviewing and discussing the middle housing zone code amendments. I guess, take it away, staff.
Oh, good evening, Chair Smith. Thank you, planning commissioners and city councilors. This is a very big project that the city has been working on. Tonight's the first time you guys get to come together and look at all the work that we've been putting into it as well as the needed housing advisory committee that was appointed. I'm going to hand it over to our consultant, John Southgate, to introduce Mig, and I believe then we're going to have a presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Batts, and thank you all for being here tonight. This really is, as your city administrator said, a momentous occasion. I won't quite call it a culmination. There's still some work to be done. You both have hearings in the next months. The Planning Commission in April and City Council in May, but I think we're, I will say that we're on the last lap to implementing really important policy work that you all have been doing for the last several years. The downtown revitalization plan, which you won't hear as much about that tonight as you will in April, but also the housing code audit, the work with the housing needs assessment, and then also communication strategy. And I just, I have to say, I respect very much what you all have done, your staff, Joy with the county, your planner. It's an exciting night. There's a lot of interesting and even, I'll say, challenging issues, and I don't expect this to just be a total love fest. I think there'll be some back and forth, but I think this is a really important kickoff to what's happening in the next couple of months. I'll also say you have a top-notch group, a consultant team. I've known the folks at Mig for years. I've had the pleasure of working with John Phinis on prior projects, really excited about the work they've done. Some of you, including the mayor, and others participated in the selection of Mig to do this work several, wow, boy, that was a number of months ago. And so with that, unless Ms. Batts, unless there's anything else you need me to address, I will turn it over to John Phinis, the project lead with Mig.
Hey, well, good evening, everybody. John Phinis, the project manager with M I G, and thank you, John, for that, those words. Very happy to be here and a lot to talk about tonight. We've done a lot of work and we're excited to share exactly what we've been doing and more importantly, hear from you all on the work that we've done so far. So with me today, I'll turn it over to Sue, if you want to introduce yourself as well. Put you on the spot.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sue Garner. I am a project manager and a planner with M I G, and I've been assisting John with the code updates.
Thanks, Sue. Also, on our call today in our meeting, we've got Keegan Golex, who's been supporting us on this project. So I'm going to share my screen so we can get started with the presentation. Okay, so tonight, as I mentioned, we appreciate the fact that we both have Planning Commission and City Council in one place. That's very helpful. The point of tonight's meeting is really to hear from you all. So we're going to share what we've done so far, but also we want to hear back from you. So we want to have some discussion. I'll make sure we have time throughout the presentation to have a break to ask questions. I don't intend to have all this information and then have all discussion at the end. So we'll walk through each step. We'll start with the process. So what is it that we've done? What are some of the next steps? And I do want to focus on community engagement. That's a big part of this project. City of Gladstone really focuses on meaningful community engagement that didn't just start with this project and process. It's been going on for some time. So we'll talk about that. Then we'll talk about the background for why we're here today. Why are we talking about housing and the zoning code updates? We'll provide some context for that. And then we'll focus on the highlight of the agenda, which is the code amendments. So hopefully you all have had a chance to review those. They're in the packet, and we'll walk you through some of the key outcomes of those amendments, as well as talk about any questions or refinements that we have. This is a draft of the code, so these changes are in a draft state. We can make adjustments. We can fine tune. We can go back to ask questions to make this work. So keep that in mind as well. Okay, so let's get started. What are the goals for this project? We've met with Planning Commission back in November. We talked quite a bit about this. But as I know, this is a big deal for the City of Gladstone and the community. Housing is a challenge, and it's not just Gladstone. This is a crisis across the region, across the West Coast, maybe across the country. So we know we have a housing crisis. We need to look for opportunities for more housing choice and more housing opportunity. So that's our first goal. The second is recent legislation. So tonight, we're going to talk about House Bill two thousand and one and how that impacts cities such as Gladstone in the provision of what we call middle housing. So that's the second goal, is to make sure we're looking at that legislation from a statewide level and making sure we have a zoning code update that is current and up to date to meet that legislation. The third goal in here is to involve the community and you all, local decision makers, in both understanding the potential changes, but also in reflecting back into this code what it is that we'd like to see. And last but not least, we do have a deadline. This is part of House Bill two thousand and one legislation that requires cities such as Gladstone to adopt the up-to-date zoning requirements by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And I'm sure there's some questions on that, and we can definitely talk about that in a minute. So our process, yes, we've been at this for a little while. We started back over the summer. We started to work through what the community engagement strategy would be for this project. The city had developed a very thorough and comprehensive community engagement plan for updating the zoning code, and so we followed that as a starting point. We did a lot of analysis on what the existing code currently says. The great thing with Gladstone definitely made it easy on us is that there's been a lot of work done that studied existing policies, zoning, what's currently permitted, what isn't. The city's done a lot of that work, so that helped us inform what those changes need to be. And then, as recently as this last fall, over the winter, we developed what we called code concepts, and this was to help our advisory committees understand what would the implications be for new housing types in existing neighborhoods. What would they look like? What would the potential impacts and trade-offs be? So we had two groups that have been involved throughout this process at key decision-making points, and that is the NHAC, which is the Needed Housing Advisory Committee. We'll talk about that in a minute. And then the Technical Advisory Committee, the TAC. So we had two groups. The last two meetings we had, it was a joint meeting, which was great, really good discussion there. So draft amendments, which is what we're looking at tonight, next steps, which we'll talk about at the end of the presentation, will be those review hearings that John mentioned. So we'll be doing those over the next couple of months, again, after we have a chance to respond to your refinements to the draft code. So a lot of you are probably very familiar with what the City of Gladstone has already been working on over the past couple of years. And as I mentioned, that really laid the groundwork for our charges for this project. So two in particular I wanted to point out here, the twenty nineteen housing needs analysis. So very helpful in understanding the context for housing, a lot of really, really helpful data on availability of housing, needs for housing, and gaps in meeting those needs. So this needs analysis tells us that there are deficits of capacity for housing in all planned designations, so we're not just talking about, you know, high density, but also low and medium density. But also, the analysis found that the city could allow a wider range of housing or increase the density of low-density residential lands, or some combination of those two things. So keep in mind, legislation for House Bill two thousand and one took place after the housing needs analysis, but at this point, the city was positioning itself to rise to the challenge and meet those needs for housing. The other one I wanted to mention is the code audit. And this was a follow-up to the housing needs analysis to really look specifically at the zoning code to see what does it currently require? What are some ways we might fix the zoning code so that we're not impeding needed housing? And that's both what's currently permitted. It's about design requirements, siting requirements, and then the review process. You know, is the review process too onerous to really encourage more housing? And then the last one I want to mention is the downtown revitalization plan. So again, all kind of happening at the same time. And while this does a lot more in terms of street front connectivity, economic development, there are some very specific provisions in the downtown plan that really have a lot in common with the code audit, and that includes encouraging infill housing, housing opportunities like mixed-use townhomes, all sorts of different housing that could take place, in particular along Portland Avenue. So again, just thinking about all of this great work the city has done to really get a hard look at what do we need and how do we get there for housing. So that's a little bit at the city level, at the local level. While all this has been taking place, there's been a lot going on at the statewide level with D L C D. So House Bill two thousand and one, hopefully a lot of you have heard of it. If not, that's okay. We'll talk about that tonight. But House Bill two thousand and one is really where we look at when we think about what standards does the zoning code need to meet. And there's an impetus to the House bill, and that is really about how to help cities identify these issues around housing supply and housing choice. So this graphic, I think, is a pretty helpful explanation and a quick snapshot about what this bill is all about. So if you can kind of picture on the far left, your typical single-family detached home, how much space that takes up, but how much it costs, you know, what are the types of people that live in a single-family detached home? And then if you think about the other scale of housing options, as you go to the right of the spectrum, there's all sorts of different housing types that really fit within that same building footprint. So we're not talking about, you know, really tall buildings. We're not talking about a ton of density. We're talking about something that fits within that very similar building footprint. So duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage cluster development. So those are the five types of middle housing houses that we're going to be talking about tonight. So the ones that you see here on your screen. So the bill is also very specific around, it's my dog, I apologize. The bill is very specific around which cities this applies to. And so in Gladstone's case, it's considered a large city because it's within the Portland metro area. So the rules that we looked at, that we've been working with, are based on what's required for what's considered a large city because Gladstone is within the Portland metro area. So in a general sense, House Bill two thousand and one requires provision permitting of middle housing types, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes, cottage clusters, in areas that also permit single-family detached housing. That's important to keep in mind. So some definitions quickly, in case you're not familiar with some of these. The great thing with what's going on in Gladstone currently, there's a lot of middle housing today. So you look around, a lot of duplexes, triplexes, there's some townhomes. But the full spectrum required by House Bill two thousand and one includes these four, these five types, excuse me. So duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, fairly self-explanatory, townhomes, a row of two or more attached units located on the individual lot or parcel, ensures at least a common wall with an adjacent unit. And then cottage clusters, a lot of us aren't as familiar with those. There just aren't really many good examples, especially around the region. But imagine smaller buildings clustered around a common open space, and each building has a footprint no less than nine hundred square feet. And these can all be situated on a single lot or parcel. And again, really, the defining characteristic is smaller smaller homes around a common courtyard. So this is what we're talking about tonight. We're not talking about, you know, five, six-story apartments. We're talking about middle housing types that you see here. Okay, so those are the types of middle housing. Let's talk about how do we comply with the rules for middle housing with H B two thousand and one. So there are a couple of ways we can do that. The first is meet the minimum standards of the administrative rules, the O A Rs. There is also what's called a model code for middle housing that the state provides, and this is really something that is right off the shelf. You can adopt this wholesale, and it meets all the provisions and provides the right amount of guidance for middle housing. You can also do some combination of the above, and that's really the approach that we talked about with the committees about taking early on and using some combination of, you know, Gladstone definitely wants to meet minimum requirements, but is there something in the model code that we might use that could help the city with certain standards? And again, that target of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, to develop those standards. So a little bit more detail about what the requirements include. There's a lot in here, and really, our goal is to not overwhelm with too much. We just want to make sure you understand really the scale of middle housing types. So the first is minimum lot sizes, and the minimum O A Rs, the minimum rules under the O A Rs, set very specific requirements for lot sizes. And you can see these broken down. My animation is going. You can see these broken down by duplex, triplex, quadplex, townhome, and cottage cluster. And we'll talk about this with the specific code amendments later on. But basically, we're thinking about lot size in terms of unit size. So smaller units, taking up a smaller area, something like a cottage cluster taking up a larger area. There's also density. For duplex, triplexes and quadplexes, density limit is not permitted. For townhomes, it's four times the maximum or twenty-five units an acre, whichever is less. And then cottage cluster, there's no maximum permitted, but we have to have a minimum of four units an acre is required. There's also parking standards. So some very slight changes actually to what the city currently requires, and we'll talk about that in the code amendments later on. But essentially, those are laid out here, two, no more than two for a duplex, one for one townhome. And then a triplex, it varies, triplex and quadplex based on the size of the home. So it ranges between one to three for a triplex and up to four for a quadplex. All right, that was pretty fast-paced, but again, I think we can talk through a lot of that and the details in the actual amendments themselves, and we'll make sure we do that. So I do want to touch on community engagement. That's a big part of this project, as we mentioned, and it continues to go on throughout this project, obviously, after these amendments take place. So an overview about what we did through this process, as I mentioned, by no means did we start at the beginning. This is a continuum of all the engagement the City of Gladstone has been doing that preceded this project. But specifically to this project, what is it that we did and how was this designed? So I mentioned the two committees, the Needed Housing Advisory Committee. And this one was a very critical one to this project because it was specifically called out in the city's community engagement plan for the housing code update. So I really want to credit Jackie with finding such a great group that we had on this committee. We've met a series of three times already. And really, just a wide range of backgrounds for people that live in Gladstone, residents, folks that are looking for housing, folks that build housing, even somebody that built an A D U recently. So really great background to really understand what is it that we're looking for, what are some of the needs and challenges that exist out there. So we also had the Technical Advisory Committee, and this was members of the city. Metro Joy joined us with Clockamas County, and then D L C D representatives as well. So a really good group to have there. We met last November with Planning Commission, and at that point, it was really an overview of what it was we were looking at. I think we talked about some of the potential changes with the code amendments. And then we also have a variety of online resources as well. There's a project webpage. We had a recent community survey that was really helpful. We'll talk about results of that in a second. And then an online webinar that really walks through a lot of what we're talking about tonight, but does it in a way that is easy to understand and something that's widely acceptable, excuse me, approachable on the website. All right, so let's go back a little bit and recap. So I realize council members were not at this meeting, but for planning commissioners, if you can remember back in November, we just started talking about this process, some potential changes. And I want to just highlight a couple of things that were important to you that you touched on in a couple of responses since that time. So overall, we talked a lot about, this isn't a question of if, it's a question of when. We know that there's a need for housing and housing choice in Gladstone. There's also support for changes along Portland Avenue. And that's, again, specific to that downtown revitalization plan. A question came up around, you know, if we're allowing middle housing, if we're encouraging it, is there any control over ownership versus rental? So these simple versus rental ship opportunities. And then the last, the other one here on a related note is A D Us. Those are very popular, probably one of the more affordable ways of providing middle housing for a lot of property owners and applicants. And at that point, we talked a lot about existing standards. So the City of Gladstone currently has a max size of four hundred square feet. And at that Planning Commission meeting, we talked about increasing that. And so that's what you'll see in the packet tonight is increasing that maximum size to eight hundred square feet. The last point we talked quite a bit about back in November was, you know, well, geez, we're talking about a lot of housing infill. What are the potential impacts, infrastructure, you know, traffic, water, sewer, and so forth? And I think the thing to keep in mind, as you look through the code, you think about, you know, infill housing development, is really that the requirements that we're looking at, the zoning changes, we're not talking about allowing middle housing outright. We're talking about the fact that all of these would still have to go through an application process. They would still need to be permitted. So the fact that we're changing the zoning slightly to increase the types of housing choices, that doesn't change the fact that development would still need to go through that development review process, the application process, building permitting, and so on. So with that in mind, it's important to keep in mind, it's still up to an individual applicant to show burden of proof that infrastructure is available when the housing comes online. So that was a little bit on our last meeting, and I just quickly wanted to show a couple of slides from the survey that we recently closed. So the survey we had online for a few weeks, it was a companion piece to that webinar. So the webinar was really an explanation of what have we been doing, what are the potential changes? The survey was a really great way to respond back to that webinar with feedback from the community. So one question on here I wanted to highlight, we asked, what strategies do you think will be most effective at creating positive and desirable housing opportunities for a more diverse range of households? You can see some of the responses on here, but some of the top responses, the first encouraged more intense residential development in undeveloped areas, permit smaller attached housing types, and develop residential areas. And then some other responses, financial incentives, increasing allowable building area for new homes, and others. And this is important because it gives us an understanding of, you know, what are some changes that people understand are needed and potentially some trade-offs with those. Another question here on preferences. So we provided a little bit of an introduction on what it is these amendments will be doing. We explained, you know, the fact that it's encouraging more types of housing, small-scale housing, plexes, townhomes, et cetera. And then we mentioned there'll be associated design and site standards that would be part of this. So we asked, you know, does this generally feel like we're on the right path? And overall, we had majority respondents say that, yeah, this feels about right. Middle housing should look and feel a lot like single-family housing today. And that's exactly what the rules are encouraging. We want to keep the scale to fit with existing single-family neighborhoods. And then we had a number of open-ended comments, and I thought these were helpful in kind of framing our discussion tonight. These also came up quite a bit in our conversations with the advisory committees. So flexibility, that's been a big one. So in this comment from the survey, innovation requires flexibility in codes, but also requires buy-in by current residents. Parking is a big topic. Parking should be required in some form, but not necessarily off-street. So maybe some flexibility with on-street parking. Yet again, we have a comment, on-street parking will limit the ability of emergency vehicles to respond in a timely manner in an emergency. So some pros and cons with requiring it all off the street versus maybe some flexibility with a combination on and off. And then another one on design, height could reduce privacy of already existing homes. So a couple of concerns when we start thinking about infill development. And as part of this process, you know, we knew, hearing from the community, involving the community, we'd want to experiment with some potential trade-offs. If we have something like a townhome development, cottage cluster, even a duplex next to an existing single-family home, what are those impacts going to be? And would it even fit? You know, what would we need to change to make that work? So throughout the process, we started thinking about these ideas and developed what we called code concepts, which are essentially illustrations of middle housing in a typical lot in Gladstone. So we presented these to our committees. We asked the questions, what's required? How would it fit? And then what changes are needed? And I just wanted to share with you some notes from a meeting we had with our committees, talking specifically about code concepts, about middle housing in Gladstone. How would it fit? What changes would be needed? So you can see some of the notes on here. We talked everything from infrastructure impacts, like I mentioned, to parking, how would parking take place? Could we maybe look at alley access, design standards, accessibility, and all sorts of other topics. But in general, you know, a lot of the details that we're talking about tonight with the actual code amendments themselves. So again, opportunity for more housing, but Gladstone in particular is very, very considerate about livability. You know, we don't want to lose that sense of of who we are as a small town with existing neighborhoods. And overall, we talked about affordability. We know this is an opportunity to encourage affordable housing options, and that's really the gist of the state rules and everything that City of Gladstone has been looking at to date. So some outcomes of those code concepts, these are some of the things we've talked about with the committees. The first was, we want to stick with some sort of minimum parking standard. We know parking is a challenge. We heard a lot about, you know, a big gathering, a party, all of a sudden, there's no parking anywhere. So we want to make sure there's some minimum that we're requiring for parking. But we also had some concerns about if we're giving credit to on-street. So currently, the House Bill two thousand and one allows cities like Gladstone to choose, do we want off-street? Do we want on-street? Do we allow credit for on-street?
John? Unless this really interrupts the flow, is, could you take some questions now? I imagine there's been a lot of information. People may have questions, or you need to go a little bit further before that happens.
No, John, that's a great segue. This is my last slide, and then I was going to take it out there for questions, if that's okay. I appreciate that. Yeah, there's a lot to go over, so I apologize if this is taking a little longer than you expected. So I apologize if this is taking a little longer than you expected. A couple more points I just wanted to make really quickly. Density requirements, again, this goes back to flexibility. If we're really wanting to encourage middle housing, we want to allow for flexibility. So not having a maximum density for cottage clusters. And then the last one is flexibility and design standards for ADUs. Making sure that that is a viable option for middle housing. But we did hear from some folks that say, we may not want to permit ADUs for plexes. We're starting to think about what works and what doesn't. So with that, thank you, John. I'll hand it over for questions. And again, we're just about to get into the code amendments themselves. So I just would ask that if there are specific questions about anything in the packet on the amendments, if you can hold for the next section on the presentation, we'd appreciate it. But anything else up until this point, process, rules, what we've done so far, that would be a great time to talk about that. Yes.
Hi.
Vanessa, hi.
Hi, thank you. I just had a question surrounding the survey responses. And if you had more information to share about how many were received and like what the typical demographics were, and I collected some of that data, but I'm just curious what the overall response was.
Yeah, great, great question. The response was fairly low. I'll say that first. We just closed the survey with 21 responses. So very low. I don't have the demographic information on that yet, since we just closed that. But that's definitely something we'll provide, we'll put together, you know, who responded, demographic questions that go with that. Other questions? Okay. All right, well, this is a smart group. I know there's a lot to go over. So I appreciate everybody being patient on this. Okay, so let's talk about the draft code amendments. And this is really what we wanted to spend the bulk of time discussing. I think we can really weigh in on specifically what's required, what are the proposed changes, and what are some questions around how we do that with existing zoning code? So the first thing is we've got a lot of chapters in the municipal code. So right off the bat, we're not talking about every single chapter. And you can see that in the packet, there's a lot of pages in there. But there are quite a few chapters that we did address, that we did look at. Housing, middle housing in particular, they do have a ripple effect on different chapters, especially with what's required for HB 2001. So you've probably noticed, there's maybe one chapter that has a small, you know, strikeout underline versus another chapter that has a lot more changes. So that's something to keep in mind. But essentially, these are all the chapters that are under consideration, considering the amendments themselves. So any chapter that we made an adjustment to is shown here. So definitions, first one, a lot of definitions to go over and update, including the fact that a lot of the specific types of middle housing under House Bill 2001 were not included in Gladstone's existing code and their definitions. So clarifying that. Two zoning districts, excuse me, three zoning districts, two specifically around permitting middle housing types. So that's the R 7.2 and the R 5 zone. And then the multifamily residential, and that was really all talk about in a second to clarify some of the terms that were used. We also provided updates to planning, planned unit development, 1738, off-street parking and loading, as I mentioned, changes around required parking. And then we had various updates that we worked with Clackamas County on, and that includes mobile homes, exceptions, and then the design review process, which is a big part of House Bill 2001. So as you're going through your packet, you know, kind of starting from beginning to the end, first section is definitions. So again, the big part of this is looking at updating Gladstone to show what types of middle housing are permitted. And to do that, we have to define those housing types. So duplex, triplex, townhome, cottage cluster. And then changing slightly multi, multifamily, now multi households, changing the definition of that as five or more households within a building. Going back up to the first bullet, another part of this update, there are various pieces of legislation that have taken place. But another very important one is House Bill 2583. And this is specifically looking at removing references of family and zoning codes, zoning districts, and replacing it with something else. In this case, we have a definition shown in the packet, changing family to household. And this again, is to stay current with recent rules at the state level, House Bill 2583. So changing the definition of family to household, that one probably has probably the biggest ripple effect throughout the code. Families mentioned quite a bit in the code. So we have to make sure we're consistent across the entire zoning code. And then distinguishing differences between various housing types that aren't, haven't been necessarily defined as well. And that includes home for the aged, hospitals and nursing homes. So improving definitions for those three categories. We also clarified large scale planned unit development. That's in the definitions section as well as a separate chapter where there's some clarifications in that chapter as well. All right, and I'll talk about changes to the residential districts. I think this might be a good time to pause for any questions or clarification. The first one here, as I mentioned, we changed family to household in the definitions chapter. But this also gets applied broadly in the two residential zoning districts that we're dealing with for middle housing. Now, keep in mind, we're only referring to those two zoning districts, the R 5 and R 7.5, that currently allow single family uses as a permitted use. And if you remember, House Bill 2001 requires zones that also permit single family detached residential must also allow for the five middle housing types. So we added middle housing as a permitted use. We changed the ADU maximum square footage to 800 square feet, as was mentioned earlier. So again, that's currently 400 square feet. So that has been increased to 800 square feet. And in the minimum lot area, middle housing is separated out for multi-household with a separate proposed minimum lot area. All right, so I'm seeing a couple of hands. Let's go with Andrew. I think you had your hand up first.
Thank you. And just regarding the ADUs, are these, are we, is there any language? Are we going to be allowing manufactured units as an ADU? A mobile home or something along those lines to be placed as an additional dwelling unit? Or, yeah, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, good, good question. And I am not, I'm trying to remember the existing code standard, standard. Sue, I don't know if you remember, if the ADUs current standard requires a foundation or not. But that's a great question. Sue, do you remember?
I don't remember, but I can look it up really quickly.
Right, well, we'll look for a response on that one. Councilor Garland, you have your hand up.
So my question is also about the ADU. What is the square footage in surrounding areas codes?
That's a great question. I
Because you're doubling the size on that. So you know what other areas are.
That's a great question. Yeah, from jurisdictions that I'm familiar with, I would say 800 is more the average size, 400 is typically on the low end of the scale. I think where the 800 comes from is to really provide for more flexibility in a larger footprint. I mean, 400 square feet is pretty, pretty small. So I think the goal behind the 800 square feet was making this a little bit larger living space. But as far as the average, I'd say the 800 is probably more along the lines of what we typically see in average communities.
Okay, I only say that because I'm pretty sure there's some, a lot of houses in Gladstone that are barely that big. And so are you really building an ADU or are you putting in another house?
Yeah, the key question about the ADUs is it has to be as part of a existing home. So you have to have a primary residence, you know, single family detached home currently. That would enable an ADU to be built on that lot.
And what number is the ADU? For some reason, I know I've read it, but it's just not. So is it? It's not dwelling unit? 1706, what?
It is in the zoning districts. So they have separate definitions and site design standards within the zoning districts. So that would be the R 0.5 and R 7.5 zoning districts.
Okay. But in your, in the, never mind, I found it. It's 0613. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, Commissioner Milch, you had your hand up.
Yes, about a year and a half ago, the planning commission was talking about ADU size requirements and reviewed that, first of all, Metro did a study, or there was a study done of Metro communities three or four years ago that showed that the vast majority that had ADUs had an 800 square foot minimum or maximum, I mean, a few were slightly larger than that. The 400 square foot for Gladstone was, I think we were the only community that had one that low. So the question about comparison with other communities, 800 brings us in line with other places. One of the things we also discussed at Planning Commission at that time was some language that would allow, if a basement was to be converted to an ADU without adding any additional square footage to the existing basement, that it would be permitted to exceed the 800 square foot maximum. That way, if you had a 900 square foot basement, you wouldn't have to somehow block off 100 square feet of it to meet the standard. You could use the whole thing. And we got that language from Oregon City. And there was consensus, I think, among the planning commission that that was a good route to take. But we sort of backed off on any code language once you guys got involved.
That's helpful. If, what we could do after this, after this meeting, Commissioner Milch is look back at what you had come up with. I think that's, that would be really helpful. Right, other, other questions, thoughts? So far, we're just covering the residential districts and obviously the ADUs as well. Yes, Mayor Stumpel.
I'm looking at our code under accessory dwelling units. They don't say anything about requiring a foundation, has landscaping requirements, setbacks, all of that, but nothing about foundations.
Yes, let's see, Commissioner Mercerow.
I wanted to make sure I understood, the 800 square foot is in reference to two floors or one floor?
That's the total square footage of the ADU. So that's all encompassing of the space.
Okay, so the first floor, if you had 800 feet, the first floor would typically be 400 square feet.
Potentially, right. But again, considering the entire ADU, you would factor in, you know, if it's two stories, you would factor in both floors.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, Joe, you had your hand up.
I wanted to know if this was a good place to talk about foster homes?
Yes, this would be great. Yeah.
Okay, because in a recent draft of the code amendments, that use type was being proposed for removal. And based on the definitions in 17.06, foster home is a type of use that is licensed by the state. It doesn't reference familial relationships with foster kids or adult foster people. It really references a type of use similar to a home for the aged or group home that is defined by the use, not relationships within the home.
Joy, that's helpful. It sounds like that's something that we might be able to update or put back into the code based on that understanding. So we should, we should talk after the meeting to see how we can make that fit. That's a great idea. Great, thank you. All right, other questions on the residential districts? So what I'm, what I'm hearing is basically around ADUs, giving a little bit more thought to some design standards. Are there opinions one way or another on, you know, if we're thinking about a foundation versus something that's manufactured? Maybe a question on that, any thoughts on that? Yes, Andrew?
But I certainly want to learn more about that in looking into it and what that kind of means for community, one way or the other. So I'd like a little more education on that and how it works in other communities. And of course, a foundation increases the price dramatically too. So I believe that's something to consider, one way or the other.
Great, thank you. So something that we can provide some information on. Yes, Commissioner Mercerow.
I was going to answer a bit on the foundation. It really depends to me about what the ADU structure is. Is it part of an existing structure? Then most likely it does require. But for example, if you have 400 square feet, then I'm not sure the foundation is required as much in maybe some type of structure that's movable around the property. So that needs to be a consideration, I believe.
Great, thank you. Councilor Garland.
So I just want to piggyback and make a comment off of what Andrew had talked about and the, whether or not you would allow the manufactured houses. And because for some reason, I've got this, you know, it doesn't require a foundation, and now you've got a manufactured home. So does that mean somebody could pull in their fifth wheel and say, hey, it's an ADU? So I think maybe that could be clarified as well in that language.
Great, thank you, Councilor. Joy, I don't know if you have your hand up in regards to that, but it sounds like you do. Oh, you don't? Okay, but great. Yes.
Something else related to ADUs.
All right, we'll get to that in just one second. Vanessa, you had your hand up.
It was, yeah, to piggyback on Councilor Garland asking about RVs and tiny houses, if those are considered or can be considered ADUs, just more clarification surrounding that as well.
Great, so more clarification on ADUs. We're talking manufactured, are we talking movable? So we'll look more into that.
We're going to get creative here. People will get creative.
Great, all right, Joy, you had your hand up.
In the slide that you had about the code concepts, you shared that there was a concern about allowing accessory dwelling units for the plexes.
Yeah.
In the draft, you, there is a scratch out of an accessory dwelling unit shall not be permitted on a lot occupied by two or more dwelling units. Dwelling unit shall not be permitted on a lot occupied by two or more dwelling units. Is that going to be revisited, um, in comparison with what you heard during the code concept development? With the, with the tech or is? How are you going to limit ADUs on lots that have plexes if that, um, sentence is removed?
Yeah, I think we just recently had our last, uh, needed housing advisory and technical advisory committee meeting. And I think what I took from that meeting was. Concern of, uh, cramming too much into a lot if we're already having, you know, if we're already permitting a middle housing type. Um, like a triplex, quadplex, and then now we're adding, um, a, ADU. I think the concern was really about. Um, parking coming up in particular. Um, what are the impacts to parking? So I think, given the recent, uh, input that we got from that, I think that's something that we could revisit. Um, it just sounds to me like something that the committee wasn't feeling too strongly about, but again, I'm curious to hear what the. Council and, and Planning Commission, uh, has on that take, whether or not we would want to permit ADUs. In addition to, uh, single family homes, if we want to permit those with other middle housing types. Um, Mayor Stempel, you had your hand up.
Just a quick comment is that, um, we have a maximum for ADUs, but a way to maybe address the tiny homes is a minimum square footage for ADUs. We do have a, a citizen currently that has one of those. Tiny homes on wheels that's being used as an illegal ADU in their driveway. So if we put like a minimum of two hundred or three hundred, then that might fix that problem.
Good, thank you, Mayor. All right. So we're gonna look, look at a couple of things. Uh, we talked about ADUs, the foundation, um. Also looking at whether or not it's something we want to permit, uh, with another middle housing type. And then also, uh, potentially a minimum for ADUs. So we're really trying to steer clear of, um, uses that we don't want to see. Um, like some of the smaller movable, uh, trailers and so forth. Okay, other, other thoughts or questions on this slide? Yes, Andrew.
Fine, I apologize, but I guess my question is regarding, um. Uh, handicap access to ADUs. It's my understanding that that isn't a thing, and I just. Again, one way or the other, I'm not sure how people feel about it, but is, A, is it true that? You know, to have an ADU, there's no, you won't need to have, you know, um, handicap accessible. Facilities, which I understand if it's in your house or something like that. Was it worth something, worth at least discussing? To some extent, I guess is my question, um, with the ADUs, cuz I think with the ADUs, we're really encouraging rentals. Um, and, you know, um, accessibility might be worth at least. Having in the conversation.
Yeah, great point. And that's, that's definitely come up. Uh, you might have seen an earlier slide during our. Committee meetings. That was one of the first things that came up was making sure we're thinking about. Um, accessibility, ADA access, and, and so on. Um, and, and by and large. Um, you know, there's only so much you can do with a zoning code before it gets into the structural code. Uh, which does look at, uh, AD accessibility, uh, but that's really about housing construction. Um, there are definitely certain things we can do with the code around accessibility. Um, accessible parking is typically something you see for a, a non-residential use that the code requires, so, you know, commercial uses or industrial use. Um, but definitely noted on, you know, what, what can we do to strengthen accessibility for, for housing? Um, I, I think I saw another hand up and it looks like it. Went back down, so. Okay, well, we'll keep, we'll keep going. Okay, multi-household residential district amendments. I, I mentioned earlier that the, uh. The rules for middle housing for HB two thousand and one are very specific to any areas, uh, that are zoned. Residential that allow single family housing. So that's really what we're talking about, those two zones. Uh, R point five, R seven point five. Uh, but in the multi-household residential district that Gladstone currently has. Uh, we wanted to clarify middle housing. Now that we have definitions that we're proposing. Uh, in other zones, we want to make sure that's clear in this zone, uh, what that constitutes. Um, so currently, uh, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes and cottage clusters are listed. Uh, but they're not, uh, defined that way. So we, we clarified that. Uh, we separate minimum lot areas, but kept the original intent of the chapter. And again, this. Applies to clarifying out what those middle housing types are. So duplexes and triplexes. Uh, are allowed on a, a three thousand square foot lot. All right, let's talk about parking. Uh, we talked about, you know, standards for allowable uses, uh, dimensions. Uh, parking is a very specific part of the administrative rules. Uh, so basically what we did is clarify middle housing in the required parking chapter of the zoning code. So making sure that's very specific and very clear. Uh, a minimum of one parking space per dwelling is generally required for all housing types. So that changes a few different uses in that chapter. Uh, for example, it removes the one point five parking space requirement for duplexes. So that now is a, is a one space per unit. And this third bullet is something that came up, we talked quite a bit about at the committee level. And that is whether or not the city wants to allow on-street parking as a credit for, for off-street parking. Um, I talked about what the committee felt about that. Um, if we go this route, the on-street parking needs to be along the unit's frontage. So it also can't be reserved for individual units and it can't be, uh, it's gotta be available to the general public. So it can't be a. You know, private restricted parking space, uh, if we're allowing on-street parking credit. So I mentioned the needed housing advisory committee, technical advisory committee. Um, had some concerns with that on-street parking credit. Um, again, this is required parking. So if you don't have it in your driveway, uh, where else is it gonna be? Uh, the other option would be the on-street parking. Uh, the rules for, uh, middle housing and, and House Bill two thousand and one, the administrative rules do not allow. Credit for garage parking. So if you have a garage, you've got a car in that garage, that doesn't count as required off-street parking. So if it's off-street, it's gotta essentially be in a, in a driveway. Uh, the last part of the parking amendments are really just helping to restructure and clarify. Uh, the design review standard, standards. So we amended those, uh, to allow for more flexibility to encourage, uh, middle housing types. So any questions on parking? Again, this is a kind of a high level, level overview to the standards that are in the, the pack tonight. Uh, yes, Counselor Garland.
So, uh, I'm just one of those people who will never support lowering the parking standards. I don't think there's one person in Gladstone that owns less than two cars. And the new subdivision that they put down there off of Glen Echo is case in point, the, um. Cul-de-sac down at Portland Avenue and, uh, Hereford, case in point. There are cars everywhere and, um. Like I said, I just, you know, if you could give me a number, the people that are on this screen. Tell me how many of the people on this screen have less than two cars. And when you put them on the streets. It diminishes the visibility of people coming and going up and down streets. And, uh, the less cars we have on our streets and on people's property. The better off Gladstone is, safety wise, in my opinion. And I just, I will never agree with lowering parking standards. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Uh. Vanessa, you had your hand up.
Yes, um, I am in the same, um, boat, although I have one car only because I'm the only one driving in the house. Um, but, you know, a lot of our streets don't have sidewalks. It's not safe for our kids to walk on, let alone, you know, anyone. Um, but I'm, I'm curious just. Around the decision of the why, why, um, we think it, you know, removing the existing one point five parking spaces. Down to one and just, if you can give me a little clarification on, on that decision or why you think that that is the best decision?
Yeah, well, the first part of that, the first way to answer that question is, we talked earlier in this presentation about. Um, what does Gladstone want? Uh, but also how do we meet minimum rules at the state level and the parking standards? The ones that we're proposing, they're meeting the minimum state rules, uh, for parking. So it does, uh, come from the state. And I can give some, some clarification and background on kind of the rationale for, for doing that. Uh, and the main reason is parking is very expensive. Um, you talk to anybody that's, uh, you know. Looking for parking, developing parking, it's oftentimes one of the most costly parts of, of a development. And that's true also for housing. If you add up all the costs for, uh, housing construction, it's typically. Uh, that, that space dedicated to parking is, is one of the more costly aspects of that. So again, if we look at the, the rationale, the goals, the, the logic behind House Bill two thousand and one. It is to encourage housing options and especially options, uh, for those who. Can't or, uh, choose to not live in a single-family home that typically, uh, costs more. So. Um, again, the, the rationale is thinking about housing costs. Uh, where are some ways to, to lower those, those costs? Uh, Mayor Stempel, you had your hand up.
Yeah, this, parking is a really tough thing to. To look at all sides. We've been talking about it for at least twenty years that I know of. The problem with Clackamas County is that we are not quite a transit desert, but we really don't have good options. Which requires our citizens to use their cars. So I understand the one parking space is coming down from the state. And Metro pushes it and a lot of the other larger cities in our, in our region do. But the Multnomah County and Washington County folks don't have the same issues that we do here in Clackamas County. We don't have any other options except to use our cars. So I think that needs to be considered too, though I see the need to reduce parking in order to increase density, but there has to be. A middle ground, something that works for everybody.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, Les, you have your hand up.
Yes, um, while parking's been discussed for the last twenty years, it's really been an issue in the last four or five. And we do have countless examples of inadequate parking. We just heard that parking is, is the most costly part of development. Well, that's on the developer's side. To, to put parking in is really not that expensive, but what we're dealing with is. Uh, mandates from the state kind of quasi through Metro and. Reality and rubber is hitting the road because. Increasing density and getting us out of the cars is the goal, and I understand and respect that. But there's all kinds of discussions and pontifications, no insults intended to anyone that's been involved. About the fact that Mayor Stempel just made a point that I was gonna make. And while we can't all have two cars and we're, we're gonna have to give. Um, what the state is imposing on us. Uh, is unreasonable and will not work well in Gladstone. So anything we can do to, to increase the parking somewhat. Um, i- is critical and. What we're looking at here is extremely high cost for development. And that cost. Um, the bottom line. For anyone that's investing is the less parking they put into more housing, they put in the more money they make and the happier they are. But the downside is the quality of our community and our commerce suffers when we go to extremes. Um, we hear all kinds of things, but one thing I'm gonna reiterate. Most people need a vehicle and most people, especially in Gladstone and Clackamas County. Are going to be using a vehicle, and if there's no place to park. I can promise you, our businesses and our neighborhoods will suffer.
Great, thank you, Les. I did want to clarify, uh, I hope it's clear that the minimum standards. Are to include at least, uh, or to include a minimum of one parking space. So it, it's, um. The requirement for one off, off-street space is still there. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Let's see, I think the next on my list here is, uh, Counselor Garland, you had your hand up.
I just wanted, one more example, that Webster Ridge. So they built that thing and they put in one point five parking spaces. Some of them were, uh, designated. Um, handicap, which had to be done. Uh, then they came back to us last two years ago and they had bought part of the Tri-City Baptist Temple property. And we're putting in more garages and more parking because they were losing tenants because they didn't have enough parking. I don't think we have to go any further than that to know that parking is a problem. So. We, we can't back down on that. We just, it, it just, we lose the livability. Thank you, Mayor Stempel. Thank you. Mr. Poole, I appreciate both of your explanations. That. It, it has to be that way. Thanks.
All right, uh, Andrea, you had your hand up.
Yeah, yep, uh, uh, the, the example of the Webster Ridge, uh, you know, we, that. Came in front of the Planning Commission and one thing, uh, that they, they, uh. They mentioned was that they just underestimated the situation with how people are living. You know, with the cost of living these, being so high at the moment, uh, people are choosing alternate, uh. Methods of how they, how they're gonna house themselves. So, uh, even though it's a one-bedroom apartment, you have two people. Uh, splitting that, that apartment, you know, in an effort to save money. So that wasn't anything that really. Uh, anybody would have accounted for at the moment, uh, um, and that's just kind of where we're at. You know, it, the climate of our, you, you, you know, um. Where we're, the, and, and what we're talking about as far as the zoning code updates and the middle housing, that's exactly what we're. We're trying to address is, you know, provide housing, uh, for people that they can afford, um, so. And, uh, if people are being required to add, you know, um, so much parking. In their development, it's just, it's just not gonna pencil out for people and they're not gonna want to do it. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just. Just laying it out there that, you know, a developer's not gonna go for something if it, if it just doesn't pencil out for them. So we're, we'll be stifling our, our development at that point.
Thank you, Andrea. Um, let's see, Sue, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, um, uh, thank you, Andrea, for that point, cuz that's actually what I was gonna say is that even though we are. Uh, limited by the state rules, um, and that we can't, oh, we can't require more. Than one parking space for a dwelling unit. Doesn't mean that a developer won't provide that. And something that maybe the group wants to talk about, or we can explore a little bit more, uh, with staff is incentivizing. Um, parking, so you have almost like a trade-off. You can, you know, you reduce, um. Setbacks, then, you know, maybe, um, that would. Allow it to be penciled out for the developer. So there are ways where, you know, even though we can't write in. Um, you know, the minimum required is two or three or whatever. Um, there are ways where we can, and, and I mean, incentivize it in the code to make it fair. Um, so that is something that, you know, we have done and we have looked at for other cities. I'm just, just gonna throw that out there.
Thank you, Sue. Good, good point. With a lot of things, again, looking at minimum requirements, you know, there's. Uh, potential with other areas, uh, to, to do more. And one way to do that is incentivizing the type of development we wanna see. Um, Les, you had your hand up.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I, I get sometimes a weak signal here up on the ridge, which is why I'm typically not showing my pretty face. Um, a couple of thoughts real quickly, and one is Webster Ridge, and I appreciate, uh, Counselor Garland bringing it up. I was, uh, adamant about the shortage of parking there, and I still recall that. During the, uh, hearing for approval. We were told that, well, they would have an aggressive towing policy. And how we got there is that Metro has sort of a one-size-fits-all mandate on multifamily density. So the developer could have developed up there, had more parking and had a less obtrusive. A layout and it prevented a lot of friction and problems, uh, by. By being able to build at a lower density, but the multifamily. But the multifamily mandate made it impossible. And then I'll move to the wetlands, which are over off of Windsor. And we all know about that project. The developer was was attacked for doing proposing multifamily without enough buffers and putting too many homes in there. And it was very difficult for him to make it happen. But he too was working under Metro's mandate. And I can very vividly recall during that hearing when asked what his opinion was, and he said he'd be happy and could make it work with 15 to 20% less density. So this is not my rant about Metro. This is making it clear that Metro's control, Metro's, I, again, I kind of call it one size fits all, call it what you will, is what we're crashing into. And I don't want to be real long-winded, but this is critical and our future is here. So I I just appreciate being able to weigh in. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I just I had a question. Is Webster Ridge, it sounds like that's a multifamily development. Okay. Just keeping us having some parameters on our discussion, I want to make sure everybody's aware that we're talking about middle housing type. So the parking changes we're talking about would not apply to, say, apartments or what's right now called multifamily. We're still just talking about a very narrow set of housing types, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes and cottage clusters. So again, think about that graphic at the beginning of the presentation. You know, a a type of house that really fits in with a traditional single family footprint. I just want to make sure we're all keeping that in mind. Commissioner Mills, you had your hand up.
Yes, I wanted to talk about something that was on the previous slide regarding the multi household zone. You mentioned mentioning the duplexes, triplexes and so on in that code section. Our housing needs analysis pointed to a need of increased housing at at all levels, you know, from a single household to middle housing to multi household housing types. And I I think I want to express concurrence with a comment that was made at your shared advisory committee meeting last week. If we allow people to build some of these middle housing types in multifamily zones, it might result in actually a reduction in the number of housing units if you replace an apartment with some triplexes or duplexes. So I I don't know what you mean by listing them out, I guess, as as permitted. But I'd like to see some consideration of defining multi household housing as just those forms that that involve five units and up.
Thank you, Chair Milton. That is exactly what we talked about at that last meeting. And the the takeaway I got from that was that we, like you said, want to be very careful with that. We don't want to change zoning that's intended for higher density housing. Like you said, five units and up. The takeaway I got from that meeting was to keep that zoning as is and to not, you know, redefine it for middle housing. So that's something that we're going to be updating for that, for the future draft. So good, good clarification. Thank you. And Anessa, yes?
Excuse me. I wanted to get clarification, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but the title says MIG Sacramento. You made a made a comment. So I understand that it's just it's a minimum, right? We have to have a minimum of one parking space. But did I hear you correctly that we're not allowed to require two or 1.5?
Correct, because if you're requiring two or 1.5, it's more than the one that is a that is the the code, it says, so jurisdictions are not allowed to require more than one parking space per dwelling unit. So 1.5 exceeds that one. But again, it doesn't mean that a developer can't choose to provide more parking. It just means that we can't write in the minimum parking standard is 1.5 or above.
Okay. Yeah, I, because I, I mean, I understand that parking may be expensive when we're talking about multifamily units like apartment buildings. You know, but if we're if the standard is to make it seem like these are singles, like to match the single family lifestyle. You know, we all have driveways that we, those of us that have halt, like, you know, single family homes that can fit two cars in the driveway. I'm just one, I'm just trying to understand why we wouldn't apply that same logic, right? Like if we if we have these quadplexes, the hope is that, you know, we've got students that go to Clackamas Community College and they can afford to stay here. And they're gonna have roommates. They're gonna have multiple cars, right? Like Mayor Stempel said, we have one bus, one or two buses that come here. I just am trying to understand the logic behind us not being able to require, I mean, I get it, but like, it just it is, as you can imagine, is going to be quite frustrating. You know, we are, we are a suburb. We are not Milwaukee. We're not Portland, like, right? Like, we're a part of Metro, but we are still a suburb that is laid out quite differently and not necessarily wanting to be like when you go up into Portland and you can never find any parking anywhere in residential areas. And then to just add on to the Webster project, it does, I know we're not talking about that, but I just want to add that it does have a trickle down effect. You know, our school district expected a lot of families to move into that that residence. And we didn't have a lot of families and a lot is because there wasn't enough parking, which then lowers our enrollment for schools. And so it is important to make sure that because we don't have the infrastructure for public transit, that we have these options available for these future families that move here. And that was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Anessa. I do want to keep things going. We've got a couple more slides left that aren't as exciting as parking, but I just keep us moving. Counselor Tracy, I think you had your hand up next.
Not intended.
Okay, all right. Joy, you had you were next.
Before we leave parking, I wanted to say that the state does limit us to requiring one parking space per dwelling unit. But it doesn't, does give us the flexibility of whether or not to count street parking towards that requirement. So we are not required to count on street parking towards that one space. It is currently in the draft code. And it's good to have this discussion to look at parking thoroughly.
Thank you, Joy. Yeah, good, good point. Counselor Garlington, you had your hand up.
I put it back down. My apologies. Thank you.
All right. We can, we can always come back to parking. We know it's a, it's a, it's a big issue in Gladstone. A lot of what we talked about tonight is exactly what came up at the committee level. We did talk about, you know, if if there is no parking, if there's limited parking, then what's the alternative? If transit access isn't that great, that's exactly what came up at that meeting as well. So this is really helpful. Just a couple of additional slides, and I just want to make sure we we've covered everything, or at least the the big pieces that you wanted to talk about tonight. A few a few other parts to the amendments. One is around nonconforming uses. So we clarified that in the event of a home being destroyed, that 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 property owner, that applicant could rebuild it within the same structure footprint without an additional approval process. So just removing some of the barriers to redevelopment of a of a home that's destroyed. And then the the other update here is something we worked with Joy on, which really didn't have that great of guidance until now, which is defining, helping to define setbacks for individual manufactured homes in a mobile home park. So just adding clarification on setbacks for mobile home parks. So I think we're doing great on time. I do have just a couple more slides on what we're doing next to talk about. But I just wanted to make sure we we've covered all the major questions that you had. Thoughts, anything you'd like to see next time we're in front of you for those future hearings? We would, we would love to hear that now. Yes, Mayor Stempel.
Earlier, you'd mentioned the fact that we could do this higher density as long as we can make a case that the infrastructure exists. So we have problems with our infrastructure. It's failing all over the city. And I know in the past, we've tried to get a moratorium in place for new development because of the state of our infrastructure. Is that something that that comes into play when we're doing this metal housing? Or are we just stuck with high development and no infrastructure to support it?
Mayor, I believe, and I I I don't want to be quoted for this, but I believe, you know, it's it's within the city's ability to to put a moratorium on on new housing. But if it did so, it would have to do it equally. So it would have to do the same for a single family. That's my understanding. But Jackie, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, yes, parking and infrastructure from a staff's perspective are what really concerns us. But there is an OAR, which is an Oregon administrative rule that says that if we don't have sufficient infrastructure for these higher middle housing types, we don't have to approve them. And so that's kind of the short answer that I wanted to provide for tonight. Because I I do think that is something that we're not going to get into detail with these code amendments. But it's will our infrastructure support these types of developments?
Thank you, Jackie, for clarifying. Okay, Andrew, you have your hand up.
Sure, and this might be slightly off, but it's something I've been wondering about. It's my understanding that we need to reach 321 additional units in the city of Gladstone before, in something like 20 years. And it comes down to like 16 a year. Let's say it goes crazy and and people are building like nuts. Probably not going to happen, but what if it does? Let's say we approach that 321 very quickly. Is there any mechanism there where the city has to kind of reevaluate what what happens from there? Is there a pause on it at a certain point? Or could we just get kind of, you know, overpopulated or whatever you want to call it, too much density or or would it work too well? Is there any way to to reevaluate when we get to that 321?
Yeah, good question, Joyce.
The city has to update their housing needs analysis on a routine basis. And off the top of my head, I do not remember if it's six years or nine years. But it's definitely not the 20. So we will be required to review population statistics, buildable land area, and the results of House Bill 2001 to determine if we are moving forward appropriately for the needed housing.
Thank you so much.
Isn't it also the case, though, that that's a floor? That, you know, the the work that Eco Northwest did said you need to have at least 321 house units. I don't think it says if you exceed, if you get 323 by year 10, it's not like, okay, now you gotta stop. It's just, I I I think it just shows that you're being successful attracting people to your city. But I I don't know if that gets to your your question, Commissioner Lavon.
To some extent, I guess my my concern is that this program, I don't want to say works too well, but works to a point where all of the problems we're talking about tonight come to fruition. And and it's just piling on. So, yeah. But thank you.
I'll make a purely editorial unsolicited comment, but I I think that's, this is a, that's a great question. And and I I think the way I look at it, as as some of you know, I I my passion in this discussion is really about the downtown area. I'm I'm a great advocate for mixed use, you know, walkable downtowns. I work in Hillsborough and elsewhere doing that. And I think to me, you want to see that. And 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 there's impacts from growth, no argument. But I look at successful areas, whether it's Mississippi or or Division Street. Admittedly, a lot of my experience is in Portland. But I I've also worked in smaller communities where there's more customers for the businesses. You know, you you now you you go to Metro and say, we need to build that bridge. We need to make our improvements in Portland Avenue because we are attracting new development. It's easy for me to say, I don't live in Gladstone. It impacts you and your neighbors far more than does me. So take what I say with a grain of salt. But but I I see the right kind of growth as good for the city, good for its economy.
Counselor Garlington, you had your hand up.
I just have one question because I'm not really sure how it works. So I'm just throwing it out there if somebody has the answer. Does that 321 units, is that just for how big we are right now? Or could that be satisfied if we annexed in parts of like 82nd Drive or Kason or that sort of thing? I might be even opening up a big old can of worms that nobody wants to go there right now. But I was just wondering. That's all, because I don't have an answer.
It's based on future population projections using Portland State data and an analysis of the current housing stock and current population and looking to the future of what Gladstone will need for current and future residents. It does not consider annexation.
Thank you.
It also does not consider mixed use development because it only analyzed the land available that was residentially zoned.
Thank you, Joy. That's that's helpful. Let's see, Chair Mills, you had your hand up.
Thank you. And I'm not chair anymore. I'm just Commissioner Mills.
Okay.
You also have a chapter in here regarding planned unit development. And again, at your joint meeting last week, somebody said, well, that's not likely to come up. That's, you know, where you have a lot of land that's 80,000 square feet. And, you know, there isn't that much vacant land in Gladstone. But our code allows planned unit developments in any zone, including commercial zones. And the question has come up at some of our planning commission meetings in the past. Will there ever be housing developed along McLaughlin? Which is one of the places that has the most, you know, the most direct access to public transit to get to the jobs in Portland and other areas. And so whatever we do with that planned unit development, let's not just think of it in terms of somebody acquiring, you know, 16 contiguous 5,000 square foot lots in the, you know, the downtown area and and putting a development there. Most of the car dealerships along McLaughlin are at least two acres in sight, which means they would qualify even though they're in a commercial zone. And if in in the near future, the way that we buy and sell cars changes and and we don't see huge inventories of automobiles sitting on lots in urban areas. But instead, people that own those land, that land try to put it to a different use. You know, we we should have a code in place that considers what we want to see in planned unit developments that could very well happen along McLaughlin.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. That's a great, that's a great point. I think something that we can revisit in terms of, you know, that provision applying to any zone. That's a, that's a really good thing to to keep in mind. All right. Well, great. This has been really helpful. We're almost at seven o'clock, so I appreciate everyone's time. I just have a couple more things I wanted to go over, which is where do we go from here? What's coming up next? So the purpose of tonight's presentation is really to provide an overview of the packet tonight, the amendments that are really around the middle housing code requirements. So there are some other parts of that. One is Senate Bill 458 that is related to House Bill 2001. And that is looking at expedited land divisions for middle housing. So that would allow lot divisions for middle housing that enable them to be sold or owned individually. So if you think about, you know, a lot getting divided to split up a townhome, for example. That will be something we'll be looking at. The second is John, I know is very excited about, and many of you are as well, is various code amendments for the downtown revitalization plan. You know, that was adopted recently. It has very specific recommendations for what Gladstone should be doing, including a whole appendix on recommended zoning code changes. So that's something we'll be looking at as well. And then lastly, the comprehensive plan, the city's comprehensive plan that regulates everything. We'll be looking at updates to that because those lead directly to the implementing zoning code. So we'll be looking at comprehensive plan amendments. So uh immediate next steps, um, John, I think you, you wanted to mention something too.
Oh, actually, yeah. Um, I'm probably anticipating something you, you might say, but um uh I think uh we will reconvene the TAC, the, the technical group, which includes Joy as well as officials from the state and uh John and Jackie and myself and Sue. And I, I think there's been, this, uh, this has been a great discussion, and um uh there's some follow-up. I think we need to do parking. Um, uh, Counselor Hartman, you asked a, a good question about the, the uh, what cross-section of participation we got in the survey. And I think there's also some additional things we will be doing in the coming weeks to uh spread the word even further. But um there's some follow-up for, for, so, so John and everyone else uh on the TAC, I'll shoot out an email so we can have a meeting next week to talk about what comes out of tonight and, and how we respond to the, to this great discussion.
Great. Thank you, John. Yeah, there are definitely have been scribbling my notes down. There's quite a bit to follow up on, so great, great idea. Um, so as we do that, we'll be working on refinements to the code. I mentioned this is the first draft. Several of you pointed out some areas that we can modify and adjust, so we'll be working on amendments to the code uh based on tonight's discussion, follow up with the tax as John mentioned. And then we'll go through the public hearing process. So uh right now, that's scheduled uh for April nineteenth for the public hearing with the planning commission, and then ultimately with uh city council on May tenth. So those are the two dates we have in the calendar. Again, we'll have um responses to this night's meeting, uh refinements to the code based on what we talked about tonight and uh further discussions after that. So unless there are any other questions, uh, Mayor Semple, you raise your hand.
If we have any additional comments or questions, should we get them to Jackie? Or John, how would you like those funneled to you?
That would be great, Mayor. I think um Jackie, I might volunteer you to uh receive the, the emails.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I, I appreciate that, Mayor Semple. That's important.
Yeah, and, and so everyone knows John and myself and Jackie and Joy and Sue, the, the core team working on this, we're we're in uh fairly constant communication. So if you do have any additional information, questions, there's a lot of information here, you, you, you know, need time to review. Just make sure you get that to us. We'll, we'll be able to talk through it. So we wanted to thank you again. Uh, Mayor, did you have your hand up again? Still up. These Zoom controls, after two years, still, still figuring them out. Thank you again for the time tonight. I really appreciate it. We know how important this is for the city. There's some big changes uh that this could bring about, so we know how important this is to all of you. So thank you for the time tonight. Uh, we look forward to seeing you in the future, and we'll uh be prepared to discuss any further changes uh once we see you again. Uh, and Les, I'm sorry, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I, I didn't, I certainly didn't mean to and hope I didn't come across this holding the city or yourself um to some unreasonable standard. We're, we're in a situation where the states uh impose some things, and um so we're dealing with them. I, I wanted to say this evening that I'm going to be moving soon. I've been on the planning commission for eight years. And um, uh, this may be my last meeting, I'm not sure, but uh I, I just wanted to let everyone know, and I'll certainly be in touch with the Chair of the Planning Commission, Natalie, who's taken over and has done a wonderful job, and with uh uh administrator bets at the time when it's finalized and I moved. So if I'm not here next month, um, I know you'll all miss me. Thank you.
Thank you, Les, for letting us know.
Yeah, you don't need any last minute surprises. You know, nothing like a three day notice from someone, right?
So you're pretty sure you'll be moving outside of Gladstone.
But thank you.
So you'll definitely be moving outside of Gladstone then, Les?
Um, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Well, any other announcement? I think our portion of the presentation is over, and I'll, I'll turn it back to Jackie. If there are any other announcements or news items to, to take care of.
I think we just need Chair Smith and Mayor Semple to adjourn the work session.
Um, I would entertain someone making a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we are adjourned. Or do we need to do a roll call vote?
Just do a hand vote. Everybody that wants to.
Raise your hand. We're cross pollinating tonight, which is fine for a work session.
Everybody that wants to adjourn, raise your hand. Counsel Ripley, there you go.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I think it was a good work session. Thank you, staff, for all your preparation.
And thank you, Planning Commission, for hosting us tonight.